......
I've already started this. I'll be right there. Do you want, what you have there? So you do the hard things. And then you'll have five more hours. So right now only panelists have people that have elevated information. When I go through block, I've got some. Whatever you want to do about it, so we have to do that.
Whoa, whoa, that's not me up right here, is it? Oh, there it is.
Uh-huh.
Anybody, uh, how was that going for?
Is he right here?
The first four digits, uh, this group is all, uh, put it all together, like that. The thing is, uh, I think he's, uh, absolutely, uh, he's, uh, that, that's, uh, our, uh, team, uh, speaker. Uh, we have more, we'll have one that he did respond. Probably they're going to, uh, after that.
You should do the stuff, please.
Green.
Hello.
You have to, um, um, what about the, uh, uh, well, people that are trying?
Uh, they will be under, just, okay, yeah, so, I'm s- I'm set up as host, uh, I'm calling him to the, the phone line. Uh, so, you know.
So what do you put together, uh?
From what time, yeah, I know. I'll, I'll bring up the attendant. They might be, uh, be like that.
Everyone loves that train. Oh, not on the phone.
Well, not right now.
No, not on the phone, I can't find anything.
Yeah, I know, right? But how is it that you're like, I know.
Yeah, what?
No. Are you?
Yeah, I got an apple.
Caller with the last, oh, I, um, caller with the last three numbers, uh, nine, four, nine, can you please identify yourself?
Yeah, so I can.
Oh, okay.
Uh, no, or?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, we can, all right, and then are you talking from the desk phone or from the cell?
That's fine.
Thank you. Hi, please. Uh, T H, A I, last name, um, who's this?
Can I connect with you? This is, uh, I've got, uh, the hard, here, so if you're already connected to us, are you trying to, are you, just, just see where?
Cool, and you got it.
Turn over your needs to connect, just like that.
Oh, oh.
Thank you.
How do you, with experience, you have, it's the right, uh?
Follow my, uh, I, I got it.
Five thirty-three. Okay, all right, then, uh-
Chairman, this- Chairman, this is Ken Nguyen. Yeah, I may have to leave early today because my client just passed away yesterday to help to make arrangements for this zero. So I may leave early. Um, I would try to stay as long as possible until the finish of this meeting.
That's quite all right, Ken, you do what you have to do, and we understand, and so, um, you know, just, just note when you're leaving, and then we can take care of it from the records perspective.
All right, I will do that, thank you.
All right, um, Madam Secretary, why don't we start the meeting at this point in time?
Okay, it is now five thirty-four. And recording has begun.
Okay. Okay. I would like to call this regular planning commission meeting of September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty to order. Vince, will you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Yes, sir. Right, right hand of your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag-
United States of America-
The United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands-
For which it stands-
One nation, under God-
Under God-
The visible-
The visible-
Liberty and justice for all-
Justice for all.
Thank you, Vince, appreciate that. Madam Secretary, please, uh, call roll.
Okay, roll call. Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morrissey. Commissioner Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner Fan.
Here.
Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Here.
And Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, um, I would now invite the commission secretary to describe the way the public can access this virtual meeting.
Thank you, Chair. This meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube at www.youtube.com/cityofsantaanna-video/live and to our website at www.santa-anna.org/CC/city-meetings. While the meeting is in progress, the public may provide a comment by phone. To comment by phone, please dial one-six-six-nine-nine-zero-zero-nine-one-two-eight, enter meeting ID three-one-five-nine-six-five-one-four-nine, followed by the pound sign. When prompted for a participant ID, just enter pound. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, please dial star nine. When the comment period is opened, I will call on you by the last three numbers listed on the caller ID. After you are called upon, you must press star six to unmute yourself. After you have unmuted yourself, please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment. You will have three minutes, I will alert you when your time is up. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, um, we're gonna move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Madam Secretary, does anyone wish to speak at this time on any non-agenda items?
If you would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item, please dial star nine now. I'll wait a few seconds. Chair, no one has indicated that they'd like to, that they would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item.
Okay, given that there are no public comments at this point in time on non-agenda items, we will close the public comments at this point and move on to the consent calendar. Uh, the first item on the consent calendar, I'd like to have a motion on the minutes from the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty, planning commission meeting. Do we have a motion? Show move. Okay, do we have a second?
I'll abstain.
You'll abstain, perfect.
I was, um, recuse myself from one of the items.
Um, Commissioner Morrissey-
Okay, so, I'm sorry, that was previous, that was a study session.
Yes, there, there is no need.
So you can, you can second the motion-
I'll second the motion.
At this point. Okay, thank you, Mr. Commissioner Morrissey. Um, we have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes, roll call vote on item A. Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Fan.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero with Commissioner Garcia absent.
Okay, so at this point in time, uh, do we have a motion to approve, uh, Commissioner Garcia's absence? Do we have a motion?
Show move.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, and then second, uh, second, uh-
Cynthia.
Cynthia Contreras, yes, thank you. All right, um, Madam Secretary, please do a roll.
Roll call vote on item B. Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Fan.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero with Commissioner Garcia absent.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. With that, we will close the consent calendar and move on to the business calendar. Regarding the public hearings, I'd like to follow, I'd like to talk about the following protocol. I will now review the process for public hearing so that everyone knows what to expect. Staff will present a presentation and answer questions from the commission. The public hearing will then be opened. The applicant will be given the opportunity to speak, limited to fifteen minutes. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to five, uh, to three minutes. The applicant will be given the opportunity to respond to the comments made by the public, limited to five minutes. The public hearing will then be closed. Discussion will return to the commission with formal action taken to approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name and address. Please, uh, state whether or not you support, oppose, or are neutral to the pro, uh, to the proposal. Your statement should be, should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge. Avoid gossip, emotion, and repetition. A clear and concise, non-repetitive argument is most effective. Having said that, we will now move on to item number one. And, uh, please, at, at this time, please consider item number one, conditional use permit, twenty-twenty-seventeen, and variance number twenty-twenty-dash-oh-three for the property located at sixteen-nineteen, sixteen-twenty-one, and sixteen-twenty-three, East Edinger. Uh, please note the decision on this matter is final unless appealed within ten days. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regards to this item? Commissioner Morrissey? Hmm, not for me, thank you. Commissioner Nguyen? Not, not for me, thank you. Commissioner Rivera? No, none. Commissioner Fan?
None.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
I don't-
I have no, I have nothing disclosed at this point in time. Okay, um... Jerry, it's your presentation.
Yes, good evening, Chairman and Commissioner, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
So this first item is a request by, um, Concentra Health Services for an approval of a conditioning's permit to allow an existing industrial medical clinic to be expanded, as well as for a variance to allow a reduction in the required occupancy uh, for the property located at nineteen-sixteen, nineteen-twenty-one, and nineteen-twenty-three, East Edinger Avenue. Um, next slide. The applicant, um, is requesting approval of a CUP and a variance to expand the existing medical clinic and facilitate in tenant spaces. Um, some minor improvements that would be, um, inserted as part of the project does include, um, some new interior partition walls, as well as, um, the construction of new ADA compliant restrooms. Um, in addition to the interior improvements, the applicant is proposing to also conduct exterior improvements, um, consisting of restructuring the existing parking lot, construction of a new trash enclosure, as well as, uh, construction of new landscaping. Um, next slide. This project was originally presented to the commission on August twenty-fourth and was continued by the commission in order to allow the applicant to address some additional, um, exterior improvements that were requested by the commission, as well as to address concerns with regard to lighting and parking. Uh, next slide. Since the last, um, meeting, the applicant has worked with staff to identify additional areas of improvement. Um, this is the proposed landscape plan that has been revised. Um, the applicant, in addition to the five-foot landscape strip along Edinger Avenue, is now also proposing a three-foot landscape planter along the west elevations of the building. In addition, um, as mentioned, um, during the last meeting, um, the commission, they had some concerns with regards to the shantapad of the building, and the applicant is also proposing to add some landscape plots along the entrances of the, um, different tenant suites. Uh, next slide. This is a proposed, um, rendering of the, um, depicting the current building, as well as the proposed, um, landscape improvements. As mentioned previously in the last meeting, um, the applicant is proposing a five-foot, uh, wide landscape strip along the frontage of Edinger, which is pretty much being showcased, um, towards the right of the slide. Um, in addition to the new shrubbery that will be added, the applicant will be installing four, um, trees along the frontage. Um, to the left, along the, uh, west elevation, you can see the proposed three-foot landscape planter along that west elevation. In addition to that, the applicant is proposing to install, um, some trellises with, um, climbing vines. Um, next slide. Um, to address the lighting and parking concerns raised by the commission, additional conditions of approval have been added to the project, which include, um, requiring the middle of a photometric plan in accordance with the city's building security ordinance, um, which is pretty much a standard requirement for these type of, of, uh, projects. Uh, the photometric plan will be need to re, be reviewed by the planning building agency, as well as the, uh, police department. Um, in addition to that, staff is proposing a condition to limit the number of employees at a given time to thirteen. Um, this will ensure that there will be, at a minimum, twenty-seven parking spaces available for patrons of the facility. Um, in addition to that, the applicant has agreed, should there be a parking issue, uh, they would refer their patients to some of their nearby facilities. Um, and lastly, um, to ensure that the project will not deviate from the planned operation, a condition of approval has been added to review the project, uh, within six months of the date of issuing of the certificate of occupancy. Next slide. Um, with that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve conditioning's permit number twenty-twenty-dash-seventeen and variance number twenty-twenty-dash-zero-three as condition. That concludes staff presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions that the commission may have. In addition, the applicant is also in attendance.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, let's start with, uh, Commissioner Morrissey, do you have any questions of Jerry and staff?
Uh, no, no questions at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Nguyen?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
Um, yes, quick question, as far as, uh, the landscaping, I mean, it looks really good. Uh, my only question is, um, as far as the trees off of, um, off of Edinger, are those gonna be, uh, mature trees, or how are we going about that process?
Commissioner Rivera, those trees are usually twenty-four-inch box trees, uh, but we could certainly add a requirement to be mature trees if you like.
Okay, yeah, I, I was thinking possibly something maybe matured, just depending on, I mean, how big it is. I mean, it looks good in the pictures, but I know that probably take a very long time, and sometimes, you know, the renderings look great, and we get these, you know, um, trees that are very small, so that would be good to see if we can do something, uh, maybe something a little bit more mature, a little bit bigger, uh, but it looks great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rivera. Commissioner Fan?
Hi, um, thank you, I, my question is regarding, um, we talked about, you know, them, the applicant, I guess directing, um, patients to other locations. Um, what is the mechanism for, and I may have missed this, but what is the mechanism for ensuring that, you know, that they're, they're, how are they keeping track of that? Because, you know, I know that if I'm a patient, and obviously this is urgent care, I'm, I'm gonna just find parking somewhere, right, like, and it's not as though you're inside the medical office that you'll know that I parked across the street, or down the block, or whatever the other s- situation may be.
Commissioner Fan, um, the applicant could probably better, um, explain this, but as part of the parking analysis that was conducted for the project, um, there is no issues in terms of there being a lack of parking. Um, some of the commissioners, they raised some concerns of the possibility of it potentially having some impact to the adjacent uses. Um, with that, we did modify the parking management, or parking analysis plan to include a parking management. Um, details that the applicant indicates there is an issue, uh, with regards to parking, they would defer, um, their patients to other nearby facilities.
Right, but I understand our, the, the study shows that it doesn't have an issue, but the point of having the condition is that if there is an issue, that it is addressed adequately and promptly. But I just wanna know what mechanism that actually is, in the event there is an issue, right? Like, or else there's, there's no point in having a condition that doesn't have any effect. So, um, maybe I'll wait for the applicant, and they can better explain that to me.
Yeah, and I could still wanna elaborate, that's something that we would definitely have to monitor from a staff perspective, uh, which is why we included that six-month, uh, review period as well. So, yeah, it would be something that staff would have to constantly monitor between planning, as well as court enforcement.
And would the review period include, I guess, outreach to neighboring businesses? Talking to them, making sure that, you know, getting their input? Cause they're the ones most affected, right?
Commissioner Fan, yes, we will include that as part of our review.
Great, thank you, that's all for now.
Uh, Vice Chair Contreras Leo, do you have any questions at this time?
I do not.
Okay, um, I don't have any questions, uh, Jerry, at this time, so, uh, thank you very much for the presentation. And, um, at this point, uh, Madam Secretary, have we received any additional written comments since this, uh, last time, uh, this matter was discussed?
No additional comments were received since the last time this item was agendized.
Thank you. Uh, we will now open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak on this matter? Please identify yourself.
Lisa, just one moment, Chair, we're going to unmute her, Lisa. Please, Lisa, we have unmuted you, please dial star six and begin speaking. Lisa, please dial star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, I apologize, I unmuted.
Thank you.
This is Lisa Stewart, this is Lisa Stewart, I'm the representative for Concentra, and I wanted to start off by thanking, thanking Jerry and our team for all the hard work that went into this application, and I want to thank the entire planning commissioning team for your considerations. Um, we at Concentra feel that we add employment, as well as medical services, to the community, and we sincerely hope that the commission approves our request so that we can expand into this center space, uh, so to improve our functionability and our flow for our patients, as well as our patients. Um, I know that there was a question regarding diverting patients to our two neighboring clinics, and what I did, I wanted to address that, and I will gladly take questions. I would say that we, we typically have a certain count of patients at each one of our centers, and we, it is our standard practice that once we reach that threshold, that we do divert to a, a neighboring clinic, and if we do not have a lobby overflowing with patients, a parking lot overflowing with cars, and certainly, we, we will then cripple ourselves on getting our patients to do care. So it is standard practice for us to divert, and we can draft a letter accordingly if it will suit the requirements. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you for the, thank you for that comment. Um, Madam Secretary, do we have anyone else who would like to speak at this point in time?
Chair, I will go ahead and ask for callers to press star nine if they'd like to speak on this item. I'll wait a few moments. We don't have any speakers, Chair, and just for the record, I'd like to-
Okay.
-announce that Commissioner Garcia has joined the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, all right, so, there's no, no one else has any comments from the public hearing. We'll now close the public hearing, and we'll come, bring it back to the, uh, commission. Um, at this point in time, does the commission have any questions of the applicant and/or staff? We'll start with, uh, Commissioner Morrissey? Commissioner Morrissey?
I'm, I'm sorry, I was muted, so, I'm muted now. Um, I'd like to, um, thank staff for the, the efforts that put forth on this, and the applicant as well, addressing, uh, all our concerns. Seems like all or most of them were addressed, the landscaping and, uh, uh, limiting the amount of employees and, uh, providing what appears to be adequate spaces for the, um, patients or, uh, guests. Um, so, glad to see this was worked out. Um, with regards to the trees at the front, um, not sure how much space is there, um, in terms of fitting a thirty-six-inch box, but, uh, we'd have to, we can see how big that, um, parkway is there. But, yeah, I'd absolutely like to be able to get the biggest tree poss- trees possible in there as well. Those are my comments, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Morrissey. Commissioner Nguyen, do you have any comments or questions of the applicant?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, Rivera?
Yeah, uh, similar comments, just thanks for, uh, addressing those concerns we had on the last meeting. I think most of the, uh, most of the stuff we, we had concerns about, raised concerns about, uh, seems like, like they have been, um, addressed. Um, and then, uh, following along also, um, you know, whatever, as, as, as big as you can get the trees that were, that are able to fit, if the box, uh, if the twenty-four-inch box is the biggest you can do, then that, that, that works. I was just trying to think, you know, um, any way possible, if we could do bigger, then that'd be great. Uh, if not, then twenty-four is good, if we could do thirty-six, that would be great too. Um, but other than that, no questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rivera. Um, Commissioner Fan?
Um, no questions, I believe the applicant answered my concern with how they're gonna monitor, um, which I'm really glad to know about, and I am very appreciative of, you know, of the applicant for addressing these issues, and definitely with the landscaping plan, that's been an issue that we've had before, um, and they look great, so, uh, that's all that comes to that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Fan. Vice Chair Contreras Leo, any questions?
No, just a comment, I just wanna thank, uh, first of all, the applicant for being so responsive and following through with staff, and thank you to staff as well for working with the applicant to address all the issues. I know it got a little frustrating last time, but it looks great, and, um, I'm appreciative of the, of your response submitted to the project. Thank you to both of you.
Okay, and, um, I have no, I have no questions of either the, uh, applicant or staff at this point in time, again, but I, to echo what, uh, Vice Chair Contreras Leo said, you know, I, I appreciate everybody having patience, and more importantly, making sure that we came to a reasonable and, and understandable solution that, uh, was, uh, hopefully, uh, in the long run, gonna be very, make the whole property and its, uh, and, and the building and, and its occupants, uh, a lot more appreciative of what we've got in this facility. Uh, thank you for your support from the applicant, we appreciate you, uh, working with all of us, and, uh, with that said, let's move on to, if, if there's no further comments or concerns, I'd like to have a motion on this item. Chairman? I would like to, uh, motion to approve a conditioning permit number two-zero-two-zero-dash-ten as condition, and approve number two-zero-two-zero-dash-zero-three as condition. Thank you, Ken, we have a second.
This is Commissioner Rivera, I second.
Hey, thank you. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Um, no further comments or questions on anybody's behalf?
No.
Hearing none. Madam Secretary, will you please call roll?
Yes, roll-
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote for item number one. Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Commissioner Fan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes by unanimous consent.
Thank you very much, everybody, I appreciate that. Uh, we will now move on to the second item. Hold on, my, uh, this is the time and place to consider item number two. Density bonus, bonus agreement, application number twenty-twenty-dash-oh-one. Site plan review number twenty-twenty-dash-oh-one. Site plan review number twenty-twenty-dash-oh-two. Variance number twenty-twenty-dash-oh-five. And tentative parcel map number twenty-twenty-dash-oh-two, dash-oh-three for the property located at two-zero-one West Third Street. Please note the decision on the variance and tentative parcel map and corresponding addendum to the environmental impact report is final unless appealed within ten days. Recommendations on the site plan, density bonus agreement, and corresponding, uh, addendum to the environmental impact report will be forwarded to the city council at a date, no later, uh, at a later date for final determination. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything that they wish to disclose with regards to this item? Uh, Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Uh, yes, I had previously, uh, recused myself, um, due to possible perception of conflict of interest, but after consulting with the attorney, determined there was actually no conflict, so, I, I will be able to, uh, consider this item, or these items.
Thank you, Com- thank you, Commissioner Morrissey. Uh, Commissioner Nguyen?
No, I have nothing to disclose, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Fan?
Hi, yes, uh, consistent with, um, the last meeting, I will have to recuse myself as my employer, Lieutenant Hunter, represents the applicant, uh, for many years, and so I will now leave the room and turn off my mic. Someone please let me know when to come back.
Thanks, thank you, Commissioner Fan. Commissioner Rivera? Uh, I've already disclosed on, oh, sorry, um, Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Have nothing, thank you.
And I myself have nothing, so, having said that, um... Selena, it's your turn to pre- present- And I myself have nothing, so having said that, Selena, it's your turn to present.
Thank you, good evening, commissioners. Tonight you have four actions before you related to the development project at 201 West Third Street. It's a mixed-use development project located in the downtown transit zoning code and downtown district center general plan land use designation. It's an approximately one and a half acre site located within close proximity to retail shops, restaurants, government buildings, employment centers, and birch park. It's also within close proximity of the future Orange County streetcar, which is currently under construction and will be operational in the year 2022. This will have connections to the Santa Ana Regional Transportation Center with, with access to Amtrak and MetroLink service and Orange, OCTA bus routes. Here you can see some site photos of the existing conditions, which include an existing three-level parking structure, which has approximately 440 parking spaces for both hourly and monthly public parking. This parking structure was constructed in the early 1980s and is in need of repairs. In 2014, the planning and building agency released a request for qualifications, which included shared public and, which listed specifications for, including shared public and private parking, to reconnect Sycamore Street to Third and Fourth Streets to provide exceptional architecture and specifying wanted uses. In response, five proposals were received and only one included a hotel component. In 2016, the community development agency entered into an exclusive negotiation agreement with Caribou Industries and has brought, who has brought forth the project that is before you tonight. That includes demolition of the existing public parking structure and construction of 211 public parking spaces along with 171 multifamily units, including 19 very low-income units, approximately 13,000 square feet of ground floor commercial uses, a 75-room hotel, and reconstruction of Sycamore Street. So here you can see an image of the site plan, which depicts the project details that I just went over. So it'll be constructed within two buildings. On the west side, outlined in red, is the mixed-use building, which includes the 171 residential units, 13,000 square feet of commercial space, and 440 parking spaces. Vehicular access to the project site will be taken from the alley just north of the project with the arrows shown in blue. Then moving east, you'll see with the blue arrow that Sycamore Street will be reconstructed. A new valet parking drop-off zone will be located adjacent to the hotel. The hotel building is outlined in blue, which is the 75-room hotel with 46 mechanical parking lifts and parking spaces. And here you can see a cross-section of the buildings. This basically is a, cutting the buildings in half what you would see here, so it demonstrates the building heights and each component of the building. Starting with the mixed-use building, which is on the left, you'll see that it's comprised of two elements, mainly public parking and residential units. Taking a closer look at, or mainly parking, I should say, and residential units. Now taking a closer look at the parking, that's the area that's outlined in red. The levels that are shaded in light red are the levels that would be the 211 public parking spaces along with 34 reserved hotel valet parking spaces. The shaded levels in green are the residential parking spaces for a total of 196 residential spaces. And then you'll see the bulk of the residential units begin on levels nine and above. And that comprises the most, the rest of the building with penthouse-level units and a roof deck that overlooks downtown. The subterranean parking level will span the entire project site and be reconstructed underneath Sycamore Street. This will be utilized for public and hotel valet parking. And then moving to the east for the hotel building, you'll see the two-story level lobby, the hotel parking lifts in the shaded area that's blue, and then the hotel units that start on levels two and above. And here you can just see a rendering of the mixed-use building and a view from Third Street looking northeast. The building is proposed to be a California contemporary architectural style, which is one of the four architectural styles permitted for the line-block building type. Here you can see a close-up of the corner of Third and Broadway and the building elevations. This includes tan masonry brick, punched windows, recessed storefronts and display windows, the use of bulkheads and transom windows, wall art, and a plaza with statement tree at the corner. This here is a detailed elevation of what you can see. We took into account the nearby and adjacent buildings. This is, on the bottom left, you can see the building to the north of the project site. It's an existing four-story masonry brick building. And the massing of the lower level of the mixed-use building lines up with the height of this building. To the bottom right is the building across the street to the south. It's a two-story, story masonry brick building with dark bronze storefronts, transom windows, bulkheads, and recessed entries. Here you can see the plan view of the building elevations. And at the bottom right is a close-up of those details that were found on the nearby adjacent buildings. This includes the transom windows, the bulkheads, and recessed storefronts. Moving on, you can see a rendering from Third Street looking north on what would be the new Sycamore Street. This could be closed with proper permits for use of special events. And here you can see the, a rendering of the hotel building looking from Third Street northwest. Again, a contemporary design, 10-story building, which includes ACM metal panels, bronze windows, and marble finishes. As part of the project, the applicant will be providing public parking spaces. This is provided on levels, the subterranean level to level four, 211 spaces. Access to this again would be from the alley to the north of the site. And pedestrians would be able to access their vehicles in the street level via a lobby that exits onto Sycamore Street. Uh, the remaining 200 vehicle spaces could utilize one of the four city-owned parking structures that are within a short walk of the project site to make up for the rest of the public parking spaces. In regards to the entitlements for the project, an addendum was drafted. This tiered off of the 2010 Transit Zoning Code EIR, which was done with the adoption of the Transit Zoning Code and analyzed approximately 4,000 residential units, 400 square feet of commercial space, and 15 acres of open space. The proposed project before you tonight is just a small percentage of the residential units and commercial space that was previously analyzed. In addition, a series of technical studies were prepared for the project. And the project is, is within a transit priority area in which aesthetics and parking impacts are not considered a significant impact. The addendum concluded that no new or substantially greater impacts would occur with the implementation of the proposed project when compared to those identified in the 2010 Transit Zoning Code EIR. Therefore, the applicable project mitigation measures will continue to mitigate or lessen impacts that, that were already identified by the 2010 EIR. In regards to state law and the density bonus agreement, the applicant's proposing to include 19 very low-income units dispersed throughout the project site. This would be attainable to individuals and households that make between 30% to 50% of the area median income. And in exchange for providing those units, a density bonus of 35% is, is provided to the applicant, which is an additional 44 units. In addition, they're entitled to parking, reduced parking standards at a rate of one space per studio and one space per bedroom and two spaces per two-bedroom for a total of 196 parking spaces. The state density law also grants waivers and concessions. Waivers are items that would physically preclude a development from happening. And concessions are items that would allow the project to be financially feasible. These are waivers and concessions from development standards. The first one is floor area ratio, which the project proposes at 4.2 when the downtown district center is a maximum of 3.0. The number of stories is proposed for 16 when the Transit Zoning Code line-block permits a maximum of 10 stories. And for the two concessions, open space is in regards to the architectural design and location of the open space, not the quantity. So the open space is designed as open roof decks rather than in forecourts or courtyard. For massing, this is, the Transit Zoning Code requires that 85% of the third level be the maximum where 93% is proposed. So here you can see some visual images of the parking for the hotel component. On the left is the site plan, which shows the location of 42 mechanical stackers and four ADA stalls. In addition, they'll be utilizing 37 reserved valet parking spaces in the adjacent parking structure. For valet parking, this project, when applying the Transit Zoning Code parking standard, which is a rate of one parking space for 400 square feet, requires 156 parking spaces. However, the Santa Ana Municipal Code standard for hotels requires one parking space per room and one parking space for every 10 rooms for a total of 83 parking spaces, which would be required if utilized. The applicant, again, is providing 83 parking spaces in the combination of stackers, valet parking, and regular parking spaces. The Transit Zoning Code standard is actually higher than our municipal code standard as it doesn't differentiate between any commercial uses. And this is actually providing more parking is contrary to what our goals are of the Transit Zoning Code to promote transit ridership. And as such, with the mixed use and urban location of the project, staff supports the variance for the project. And also to note that the hotel parking standard for even the city, the Santa Ana Municipal Code standard, is higher than other hotel-rich cities in Orange County. Conditions of approval are included for the variance, which require valet parking, reciprocal parking, and access easements. The last entitlement is the tentative parcel map. This would subdivide the property into two parcels, one for the mixed-use building, shown in red, and one for the hotel, approximately shown in blue. It's for condominium purposes to create airspace and ownership rights for those upper levels that were then shown on the cross-section for, in order for the city to maintain ownership of the public parking spaces. It is not for condominium units to be for sale for the residential project. This project is an apartment-for-rent project. With that, that concludes staff's presentation. And there's a staff recommendation. I also want to note that we have available a variety of, we have staff available from a variety of agencies, public works, community development, and planning and building for any questions, along with the applicant and our environmental consultant.
Okay, thank you, Selena. We'll start with Commissioner Garcia, do you have any questions of staff?
Not right now, thank you.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Uh, yes, I have a couple initial questions. Uh, first question is, I saw on the presentation that the maximum height is 10 stories. Is there a height and maximum height in feet?
Commissioner Morrissey, thank you for the question. The project is actually within a height-exempt area in the city, so there is no height limit. The Transit Zoning Code specifies the number of stories.
Okay. The other question, another question is, what is the impact, the open space? I don't think I understood the, the open space exemption. Can you explain that a little further? I've seen metrics about how there's a certain amount of open space required per resident. And so what is this doing to that ratio? Is it getting better or staying same or getting worse?
The ratio in regards to quantity of open space is met and exceeded. And the Transit Zoning Code for this building type requires 15% of the lot, so that'd be approximately 5,000 square feet of common open space. And more than half of that is provided at 10,000 square feet for common open space. And then there's an additional 7,500 square feet of private open space provided with individual unit balconies for some of the units. So the concession is in regards to the location and the design, not the quantity.
Okay, I understand, thank you. Another question is, will this project, I know that there were, there's, there are separate applications for the hotel and remainder of the project. Is this project going to be constructed as one project? Is it, is it being considered as a single project?
Yes, it's all being considered as one project. And this goes along with the disposition and development agreement terms that will be presented to council and have been discussed with community development.
And maybe, like, I'll throw this out there. I was wondering in terms of the sequencing, when the parking structure is torn down, is there a plan or is the parking in downtown adequate? So we'll be missing 440 parking spaces for a period of time. I'm not sure what, what that, how long that period will be, but is there a plan for providing, making up for that somehow?
Yes, during construction, the public would be utilizing the four adjacent city-owned public parking structures that are a short walk from the project site. They're highlighted in yellow here on the screen. And the, if you have any questions regarding that.
I think, those are the only questions I have for now, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Nguyen?
I don't have any questions, but I, I have some comments. I, in my opinion, this project is much needed for the downtown IR. I like the idea of the, of the commercial, retail, residential, and it was the most important, the hotel development added to part of this project. I think the project will, will help to promote and increase businesses for the downtown and revise the downtown IR, much needed. I am personally support, as long as support this project. And thank Mr. Harra for bringing the project to our city.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Commissioner Rivera?
No, I don't have any comment, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Contreras, Vice Chair Contreras Leo, sorry.
No worries. Selena, can you, I know we reviewed the project prior, but, and you answered this question, but I'd like, I'd like it to be on record so like the public can understand because I didn't know what it meant before. You had mentioned that it's very low-income. Can you explain what that is and also how our residents will be able to apply for this? It's not like other times where, you know, they'll hope to get properly selected because other outside folks come in to apply for affordable housing. Can you explain that a little bit?
Hi, yes, thank you, Vice Chair. I'm going to turn that question over to Jutson Brown with the Housing Division. Who's here for that question?
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Uh thank you very much, Commissioner, um for that, for that question. Again, my name is Judson Brown. I serve as our Housing Manager with our Community Development Agency. The 19 units, affordable housing units on-site will be affordable to very low-income families who earn less than the affordability limits established by the Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh currently, uh the income limit for a one-person household is $44,850. For a two-person household is $51,250. And for a three-person household is $57,650. The developer, as part of their density bonus agreement, will be required to maintain a local preference for residents of Santa Ana who live in or work in our city. And they'll be required to maintain a waiting list of applicants for those units that will be subject to audit by our Housing Division to ensure that residents of the city of Santa Ana are being served in those 19 units. Uh in addition, the uh Property Manager will be required to recertify the income eligibility of the families on an annual basis. And we will uh be uh monitoring those 19 units over the 55-year term of affordability to ensure that the units remain affordable to uh Santa Ana residents in our community.
Thank you. I think that's awesome, so thank you for explaining that. No other questions?
No other questions? Let me just, let me just build on that for clarification because I'm not sure exactly what I heard. The nine, the units are strictly going to be for Santa Ana applicants only? Or is it going to be a priority for Santa Ana applicants?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh the uh city is unable to make it a requirement that the units are restricted only for residents of the city of Santa Ana. So it is a preference uh in leasing the units to households that live and or work in our city. Uh so it's, uh it would be in violation of uh fair housing law and uh non-discrimination in preferences for housing occupancy if we were to make it a absolute requirement that the units only serve residents of the city of Santa Ana. So it will be a preference. Now, that preference in practice, uh what it looks like in practice, so take for example our uh recent uh applications for Tiny Tim Plaza renamed La Placita Cinco. Uh the project received uh several hundred applicants for uh 51, those 51 units uh from residents of the city. And so we do, in, in most all cases, in most all of our affordable housing projects, residents of the city of Santa Ana far exceed any, any applicants, applications from outside the city.
Okay, all right. So it isn't exclusive, it's just a uh somewhat of a priority?
Yes, yes, sir, it's a preference.
Okay. Um that's all I have for questions of Selena at this point in time. No other questions of staff? Does anyone else want to have a question about uh the project with staff? Okay. Chairman Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
Uh yes, Chair, there were 22 comments, total comments received, 21 in favor, one in opposition. Those have been distributed and are posted on our website for review.
Okay. All right, and uh at, at this point in time, we would like to open up the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak on this matter?
Yes, uh good evening. Good, good evening, Chair McLaughlin, Honorable Planning Commissioners, Mike Hera. I think this project, uh you know, we've been working on it now for about six years. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. I, I, I can hear you, I'm sorry. Can everybody hear?
I can hear him.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we've been working on this project for about six years uh and uh it has uh culminated into a really, really great project. I, I believe this project that adds so much to it. Uh we've taken a lot of components, very low-income housing. We've included a PLA for the unions, hotel, uh bed tax, uh retail tax, uh the components of mixed use on the items and putting this project into uh supporting so much of the local community and everybody around, the residents included. Uh you know, we, we've done a lot with, with the unions. We've uh made new businesses happening uh within the area with the, with, with this new building as far as retail, uh the hotel, again, the, the TOT tax. Uh the TOD, the light rail, the connection between Fourth Street uh and uh Third Street, uh all that area bringing people to downtown. And one of the biggest things is the massing of people coming together, using, using, coming together in the, in the area that used to been closed off by Sycamore, uh it will now be open. So we will have so many different events and there'll be huge events that'll be outside. And a lot of the things that'll be going on will include everybody within the community. I think this is a really big needed deal. Like we, we started, we built Original Mike years ago as one of the first people down here and also the uh Santoro Building and uh one of the, about 30 years ago. And we have seen a lot of things change, but there's not enough people around that area to directly go down and utilize all these businesses, which makes it kind of tough. I think this will open that up. It will make great things happen for our community. And uh, and it's, it's just a really great thing that's going on here and we need to push on that, especially with transit-oriented development. So uh with that, um you know, I want to just say thank you very much for hearing us out and the six years and hundreds of thousands of dollars of putting this project together and trying to make everything work for everyone. And um have a blessed evening. Thanks, Mike Hera.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hera. Um do we have any, do, are there any questions of the applicant at this point in time from the commission? Commissioner Garcia?
None at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Morrissey?
Uh no questions at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Nguyen?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Vice Chair Contras Leo?
Mr. Hera, I just want to say thank you again. You know, it's the second time you're, you're at the commission this year. And uh thank you for bringing jobs again to our city. I was going to mention if you'd consider local hire, but you addressed that already. Um and I, I just want to say thank you for continuing to invest in our city and helping to revitalize it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I'm honored to be here.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Contras Leo. Um I have no, no further comments. I appreciate the project um at this point in time. What I'd like to do is open up the public comments for those that are calling in. Madam Secretary, do we have any people that are online right now to talk about this item?
We do. Callers, if you'd like to speak on this item, please dial star nine. Please remember to dial star six to unmute yourself. After you've done so, please state your name and your position on the matter. You will have three minutes and I will alert you when your time is up. First caller with the last three digits of eight zero two. Please dial star six and go ahead.
Thank you, uh Chairman McLaughlin and uh Commissioners. My name is Doug Mangione and I am speaking on behalf of the 2,500 working men and women of the Brotherhood, Brotherhood of Electrical Workers in Orange County. The IBW supports the recommended actions for this project. I think this will enhance the downtown and make it uh the destination it deserves to be. As a veteran, I particularly like the veteran hiring preference that the developer has agreed to. And also the local hire preference. This project will provide opportunities for young men and women to enter our apprenticeship and to uh start a career in a highly, uh well-paid with wealth, good benefits, construction industry. Local IBW started here in Santa Ana in 1928 and we have been providing highly skilled electrical workers to our signatory contractors in Orange County for almost 100 years. And our apprenticeship is based right here in good old Santa Ana. So I applaud the developer and I applaud him uh working with us and providing opportunities for uh high-paid jobs in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug Mangione. Uh next.
Next caller with the last three digits of two seven three, please dial star six. State your name, your position and your comment. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Ernesto Medrano. I represent the Los Angeles and Orange County Building and Construction Trade Council. And I'm also calling here to urge a recommendation on the approval of the density bonus agreement application. The Building Trade Council are in talks with the developer for a project labor agreement that'll provide the skilled and trained workers. It'll provide for local, local hire, veteran preferences, as you heard. But also provide strong safety standards for the construction workers that'll be working on the job site. The other good thing about it is that it'll allow the two apprenticeship readiness curriculum courses, one at Century High School, the other one at Santa Ana College, give them uh the potential opportunities to enter into uh working into their apprenticeship through our joint labor management programs. So I don't want to belabor the good things that have been said in the uh spirit of urgency, of uh efficiency. I just want to uh urge this commission to uh approve the uh, the item. And uh we're excited to partner with Caribou Industries to be able to build this uh great facility, this great building. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernesto. Uh next.
Next caller with the last three numbers, two four three, please dial star six to unmute yourself. State your name, your position and your comment. Go ahead.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, sorry about that. My name is Luis Andres Perez. I'm the political director for the United Association of Farmers and Seafighters Local 582. I'm uh urging you to call in and really support of the project. I think it's, it's a perfect project, it's wonderful, uh from an aesthetic design, but also too, uh the fact that it's gonna bring in 171 multifamily housing units, a 75-room hotel and then with mixed-use components, an additional 19 low-income housing uh units with a preference for uh Santa Ana residents. I think this is a really great um development overall. Uh in addition to the project labor agreement, um Mr. Hera is willing to sign with the Los Angeles and Orange County Building Trade Council. Uh so once again, I'm just urging for you guys to support the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. A caller with the last three numbers, four seven five, please dial star six. State your name, your position and your comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, hello, my name is Doug Robbins. I'm a business representative for the Painters and Allied Trade Union. I represent about 10,000 of the best-trained workforce in the painting, drywall finishing, glazing and resilient flooring industry. I would like to express my support for the third and Broadway, Broadway project. The developer has committed to the Building Trade for a project labor, labor agreement, which will have local hire requirements to ensure that the community residents have the opportunity to work in the city where they live. That will provide hundreds of well-paid jobs and apprenticeship opportunities for a career in the construction industry, as well as giving uh preference to hire veterans for this project to a home and it's the hard hats program. And you, you hear all this talk in local governments about fiscal shortages due to the COVID-19. Um I can't think of a better way to boost the local economy, but to move forward with this project. And uh this project will be great for the city of Santa Ana and its residents. I strongly urge you to approve this project tonight. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Caller with the last three numbers, three six one, please dial star six and state your name, your position and your comment. Go ahead.
Good evening, this is John Hannah, uh representing the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, the 55,000 carpenters in the southwest. Uh I want to speak tonight, uh I'm an Orange resident, but I want to speak in support of the staff recommendations for the, this project, the 2011 Third Street and on certain Broadway. This project is a good fit for the area. I worked for over two decades at Second and Main Street, just catty corner away from here. And when I started, this was a, a desolate, unsafe area. And the city leaders have, and the private sector have transformed this area into an area with good housing and restaurants and other commercial establishments. This project will provide the icing on the cake for this area. Much-needed tax revenue. You don't have to tax people to death. You just have to create the commercial situation where the tax revenue will come in voluntarily. And that will help supply much-needed services for Santa Ana. There will be sufficient parking and, and one of the reasons there will be, as uh some of the uh staff have mentioned and speakers, is this is just a block away from a uh stop of the OC Streetcar, which will revolutionize, I think, a lot of transit use uh for people who will be living in this, uh one of the projects that we're dealing here. I want to also say that, um I want to commend uh Caribou and Mr. Hera for demonstrating that they are going to build this with a skilled and trained workforce, with an agreement that will ensure that Santa Ana residents, and especially young Santa Ana residents, coming out of Remington, coming out of uh the Rancio Santiago Community College District's uh programs, it's construction trade, will be getting these jobs. They will be working in the community that, that they live in. So I would uh just say, um thank you for, to Mr. Medrano and to Mr. Hera for working on that agreement. And I want to thank this planning commission, who has recently stood up in support of skilled and trained workforce. And now you have a builder who doesn't need a financial incentive to do the right thing, to have a skilled and trained workforce. He's bringing a community benefit to Santa Ana. And I say, welcome. You've been here a long time and you once again are, are giving back to the community, Mr. Hera. So I urge you, this commission, to support this project.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, two three nine, please dial star six to unmute yourself. State your name, your position and your comment. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chairman McLaughlin and members of the planning commission. My name is Boris Presley and I'm the Public Affairs Representative for the Carpenters Contractors Cooperation Committee. QUATC, as we're commonly known, is a labor management organization comprised of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters and Union Contractors. QUATC is committed to quality development and quality construction jobs, which we believe a third and Broadway project represents. This project will create hundreds of high-wage skilled construction jobs and provide a pathway to middle-class opportunities for not just Santa Ana, but the entire region. We urge the commission to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Boris.
Caller with the last three numbers, four three eight, please press star six to unmute yourself. State your name, your position and your comment. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, my name is Paul Moreno and I'm a business agent for ironworkers Local 433. And uh I'm just calling in support of this project. I mean, this is a perfect project, like everyone has said. And with these types of projects, uh it continues to give us the opportunity to uh, to put our Santa Ana residents to work. And more important, uh through the MC3 uh program that we have, to take the youth and uh give them opportunities in our apprenticeships, which are careers and good-paying jobs. I also sit on a welding uh advisory committee for a Santa Ana college. And you know, this project again will give us an opportunity to take those graduates from the college, from their welding programs, and put them directly to work on projects like this, you know, the residents of Santa Ana. So I just urge you to support this project and.
Thank you very much, Sean. Next.
Caller with the last three numbers, seven two zero, please dial star six to unmute yourself. State your name, your position and. yourself, state your name, your position, and your comment. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Ray Baca. I am the executive director for the Engineering Contractors Association, representing infrastructure contractors here in Southern California. Uh, on behalf of the members of the ECA, we respectfully urge you to vote for further approvals for this, uh, third and Broadway project, including, uh, the requested density bonus agreement and the site plan review applications as well as the others. We feel this is, uh, an important step toward the advancement of the overall project, enhancing the appeal of the entire area with a balanced set of priorities that, as others have mentioned this evening, and of course, providing for hundreds of construction career opportunities for local area workers. Uh, the ECA wishes to express appreciation for your hard work and, uh, we urge continued support for the third and Broadway project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Caller with the last three digits, zero, three, three, please dial star six to unmute yourself, state your name, your position, and your comment. Go ahead.
Uh, good evening, planning commission. My name is Todd Golden. I'm the business manager for Sprinkler Fitters Local seven oh nine. Uh, we have eleven hundred members working in the Los Angeles, Orange County area. We actively have two hundred and forty-five apprentices enrolled into our program. And we've been providing skilled and trained labor here for a hundred years. Now, we urge the commission to approve this project. The project will create hundreds of jobs for skilled construction workers in our area and it'll also open the door for young men and women who want to enter the skilled and trained apprenticeship programs that the, the building trades provide. Um, these trade, these, uh, apprenticeship programs provide long-lasting careers to these young men and women. Um, and it's important that we kickstart them off, uh, and what better way to do it than stand in your community. Um, we thank you for your time and your consideration and, uh, hopefully have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Caller with the last three digits, nine, nine, four, please dial star six to unmute yourself, state your name, your position, and your comment. Go ahead.
Yes, this is Dave Elliott, President and CEO of the Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to support this project. Uh, we feel that this is a strong economic development, uh, project for our city. It does many, many things. So when you think of a hotel, uh, that is greatly needed in the downtown area, when you think of the, uh, housing component, you know, the parking component, the job creation, the development of additional tax revenue for the city, uh, this is a great project and I just want to commend my, uh, Hera and city staff and, uh, and I hope that the commission, as well as our council, will approve, uh, this project and moving forward and let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you Dave.
Caller with the last three digits of three, seven, two, please dial star six to unmute yourself, state your name, your position, and your comment. Go ahead.
Uh, hello. My name is Alfonso Ruiz. I'm a proud member of the Local Five Insulators Union and a longtime resident of Santa Ana and Orange County. Uh, since the economics of this project have been clearly laid out, I'd like to take a more personal approach and place focus and emphasis on the hundreds of fantastic high-paid jobs and apprenticeship opportunities that this project would bring to Santa Ana and Orange County residents, as well as our much-deserving veterans. The reason I stated that this was personal is because the opportunities from the approval of these types of projects and project labor agreements have been, without exaggeration, life-saving for me. And I'm proud to say that they have allowed me to just this last week, become a first-time homeowner here. And that's a very big deal to me and I'm very proud to say that. So with that said, I believe it is my and our collective moral obligation and duty to extend these wonderful opportunities that have done so much for me and my family to all of my fellow labors in Santa Ana and Orange County. In closing, I'd like to thank my fellow tradesmen, fellow union members and supporters of skilled labor on the call for giving me the opportunity for a better life. And I urge the council to please approve the staff recommendation on item two, so that you can help others live better as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there are any other callers that would like to speak on this item, please dial star nine now. I'll wait a few seconds. Chair, there are no other speakers.
Okay, thank you Madam Secretary. At this point in time, we will close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the commission. The, does the commission have any questions or final statements that they'd like to make at this point in time? Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Garcia.
Nothing. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Morrissey.
Uh, yes, I have a few things I'd like to, first I have a, a question for, um, staff. Is there a, um, height restriction in the National Historic District?
No, there is not.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to, um, thank Mr. Hera for, uh, being there for Santa Ana and being the one who proposed on this, this property. It's been a long time coming and, um, I'm looking forward to this project. It's going to be really great for Santa Ana for all the reasons everybody stated. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Morrissey. Um, Commissioner Nguyen.
I have no questions, uh, or comment. Uh, is that, uh, possible to be able to, uh, put out a motion?
You can put a motion together right now. I mean, we'll, we'll still, we'll still hear comments, but you can put a motion.
Okay. I would like to, uh, put out a motion to approve an, uh, addendum to climate impact report for transit zoning code projects of the mitigation monitoring reporting program for variant two zero two zero dash Europa and T S M number two zero dot zero two, variant number two zero two zero dash five, for, for cell upstreet parking with climate asset condition and, uh, T S P number two zero two zero dash zero two at.
Okay, Ken, thank, thank you for the motion. Do we have a, uh, all right, Commissioner Rivera, do you have any questions or comments at this point in time?
Uh, no, no questions or comments.
Okay. Um, Commissioner, Commissioner Vice Chair S. Leo or?
No comment.
Chair, sorry. Okay, no comment, no comment at this point. So we have a motion at this point in time. Do we have a second on that motion?
Yes, Commissioner Rivera, second.
Commissioner Rivera, second. Okay. So we have a motion, a second. And, um, just ask if there's any last comments that are going to be made at this point in time or questions that need to be made. So do, if you have a comment, a question, please do it at this point.
Um, Commissioners, uh, this is Lisa Stork, if I may. There's also, um, a recommended action that you recommend that the city council do, um, two actions as well. So I, I just wanted to point that out to Commissioner Nguyen and his motion.
Okay, so, uh, so Ken, you, you'll, you'll make the, you'll take the friendly amendment to clarify the entire.
That's correct. That's correct. Recommend that the city vote to adopt measures approved and addendum to environment report, um, and also adopting the mitigation on report program for density bonus, six and zero two zero dash zero one and site plan review, uh, two zero two, and this, this project, the women, density post women up to two zero two zero dash zero one with possession and wave side plan two, number two zero dash, two zero dash the one for mixed-use development and site line review, number two zero two zero dash zero two, hotel at.
Thank you, Commissioner Nguyen. Thank you.
Okay, and, and, uh, Commissioner Rivera, you, you second that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion, a second, no further questions. Madam Secretary, call, uh, please call for the vote.
Roll call vote on item number two. Commissioner Garcia.
Uh, um.
Hi. Commissioner Morrissey. Commissioner Nguyen.
Hi.
Commissioner Rivera.
Hi.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Hi.
Chair McLaughlin.
Hi.
Motion passes six zero with Commissioner Fan recusing herself.
Thank you very much. Um, Mike, uh, good luck with the project. Um, as has been said by others, uh, this is going to be a really great incentive for the downtown area and hopefully, uh, hopefully do a lot more to, to build along, to build more and, and, and more vibrant businesses and opportunities downtown. So thank you for your support and, uh, thank you for taking this project on.
Chair McLaughlin, thank you, and, and members of the, uh, commission, thank you very much and have a very blessed evening. Look forward to bettering our city. Have a good evening.
Great. Thank you. Uh, with that, this concludes the business calendar. Uh, we're going to move on to comments and move on to the work-study session. Uh, Commissioner Fan, has she rejoined us?
Yes, I'm back. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi.
Is that Ken?
Yes, yes. Is it?
You're gonna, you're gonna, you're leaving at this time?
That is correct.
Fine. Thank you for joining us and thank you for, thank you for participating in the two items and, uh, take care of your, take care of your personal matters. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay. It's now time to review and discuss the proposed mixed-use development project located at four oh nine and five oh nine East Fourth Street. Please note, no action will be taken on this item. Um, Pedro, is Pedro going to be presenting or are you going to be doing this Vince?
Pedro.
Pedro's on the line.
Okay. All right, Pedro. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, before we shut, Mr. Chairman, I can't, I couldn't reach you. It's been too long and volume went away.
You, I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't know if I lose our experience, experiencing with some things, but it was, uh, a little noise and now I can barely hear anyone.
Can you hear, um, me, Vice Chair?
Yes, uh, it's on the highest. Um, I can't really hear you. Should I call back in?
Um, Chair McLaughlin, can you do a test and see if Vice Chair Contreras Leo can hear you?
I can hear Vice, I can hear Vice Chair Contreras Leo. I can hear her. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. It's just extremely, like, super far away. It's not working at my fur.
Okay. You want to call back in? Is, is, you know, we can try that at this point in time.
Go ahead and continue and, okay, I'm calling back in. I can barely hear you guys.
Thank you.
All right, well, go ahead, call back in right away and we'll hold off for a couple minutes, a couple minutes here.
Okay, so she's left the meeting and we'll wait for her to rejoin. Not yet. Just one moment. We'll be alerted when we have a new caller. Yes.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Hundred percent better again. Thank you. Sorry for the inconvenience.
Can you, can you hear us? Can you hear us?
Absolutely. That's normal.
All right, terrific. Okay. Let's, uh, let's move on to our, our presentation. Uh, Pedro, please go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, tonight, um, I will be presenting on a proposed project referred to as Fort and Mortimer Mixed-Use Development. Next slide, please.
Okay.
The, uh, project is proposed to be located in, uh, downtown on two city blocks, addresses at four oh nine and five oh nine East Fourth Street. Uh, four oh nine will be referred to as site A and five oh nine as site B. These two sites are located on the northeast intersection of Fourth and French Streets and Fourth at Mortimer. Site A is approximately one point four two three acres in size and site B approximately one point two nine two acres in size. Uh, site A has a general population of district center and is zoned transit zoning code SD eighty-four with a downtown subzone designation. Uh, site B has a general population of urban neighborhood and is zoned, uh, SD eighty-four with an urban neighborhood two subzone designation. Uh, both sites are surrounded by commercial and single and multifamily residential to the north, east, and to the south. And to the west of the site are more commercial and city, and a city parking garage. Um, I do want to note that the existing commercial facility, uh, means auto repair located at the northeast corner of Fourth and Mortimer Streets, um, at five oh one East Fourth Street is not part of the proposed project. Uh, these next slides, uh, show some back photos for reference. Uh, letter A is the view of Fourth and French Streets intersections. Letter B is the view of Fourth Street, uh, site A of the North Gate Market. Uh, letter C is the view of Fourth Street, site A, and site B, North Gate and Ming's Auto. Next slide. So letter D is a view from, uh, site A looking to, towards Mortimer Street. Letter E is the view of Fourth and French Streets, uh, intersection, and letter F is the view of Fifth and Mentor Street intersection. Next slide, please. The, uh, project includes demolition of the existing North Gate and Bellis Market and surface parking lot at site, as well as the demolition of existing commercial auto service building and accessory structures at site B. Once the sites are cleared, the applicant proposes to construct a mixed-use community, both sites, on both sites containing two sixty-nine residential units, uh, eleven thousand three hundred and one square feet of leasable commercial area, and four hundred and twenty-two onsite parking spaces. Uh, the development would also provide onsite amenities, which would include a roof deck, a courtyard, pool, off-ground and fitness areas. As part of the project, the applicant is proposing to change the subzone for site B from urban neighborhood two to urban sub. Next slide, please. Uh, this next slide provides a view of the established subzones within the current transit zoning codes. The area depicted is shown in the black dotted line and in the blown-up areas to the right. You can see that the entire block where site closed, uh, would be changed from UN two subzone to UC subzone. Next slide, please. The next, the next slide provides the proposed site plan. Uh, site A will contain a mixed-use commercial rep structure with ninety-nine residential units, a thousand eight hundred and forty square foot tenant suite designed for an eating establishment, seven thousand five hundred and fourteen square feet of retail space, and a resident and leasing, uh, lobby, site amenities, a bicycle storage, and a four half-story above-ground parking garage with two hundred and thirty parking spaces. The building frontage along Fourth Street and the intersections of Fourth and French, um, Fourth and Mortimer is seven stories in height, and the building would be five stories in height along the French Streets and Mortimer's carnages. Uh, site B is designed to be a residential building and will contain seventy units and a four-story above-ground parking garage with a hundred and ninety-two onsite parking spaces. Um, I see. Uh, the next slide provides the conceptual land, plan for both sites. Uh, site A would include about twenty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy square feet of open space, including fifteen thousand three hundred and forty-five public common space and eight thousand four hundred square feet of private open space. public common space and eight thousand four hundred square feet of private open space. Site B would include, uh, approximately sixteen thousand square feet of open space including thirteen thousand two hundred and thirty-three of public, uh, slash common space and approximately twenty-eight hundred for private open space. Next slide, please. Uh, these next series of slides provide an overview of the design of both buildings. Um, both sites have been carefully designed with the existing development pattern in downtown Santa Ana. The ground floor of building A is in the main street commercial architectural style consistent with the identifiable patterns typical of downtown buildings. And then the residential units are designed California contemporary style. Next slide, please. The buildings, uh, vary height from seven stories to five, um, for Site A generates a smooth transition from the higher density character of the Fourth and French to the lower density character of the single-family residence to the north and the east. Next slide, please. Uh, building B, the B is purely residential, um, and it complements the existing multifamily development along four streets. A landscape buffers provide for each site, uh, creating a transit space between the top structure and the street level while also providing screening at the lower level of the garages, uh, adjacent to the single-family residence. In addition, um, both structures design less than the massing of the project with elevation, string articulation, multiple volume, uh, and varied architectural styles. Uh, each site has its own unique architectural vernacular that is defined by the scale, facade articulation, roof form, materials and detailings. Um, for example, a variety of window dimensions are provided where appropriate while, uh, the trim details vary between sites. Varied material color palettes are used on both buildings in addition to varied window recesses and depth elements. Uh, wall color palettes is vexed across both sites, uh, care has been taken to provide unified look to court and the surrounding building. Uh, both structures will be herbal brick veneer, glass, smooth stucco finishes, metal awnings and textured block panel. Next slide, please. Uh, these next couple of slides provide a range of a couple of different perspectives. The first one is of Site C at the intersection of Fourth and French Streets. Next slide. Uh, this next one is along Fourth Street looking north at Site A, you can see, um, retail for the ground floor. Next slide. The last, um, is along Fourth Street but looking west at Site B and Site A. Next slide. Uh, approval of this project would require an attempt, the environmental impact report for the transit zoning code and adoption of a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. It would require site plan review for mixed-use developments over four-story in height. Uh, would require a variance to increase the allowable building size enassing for Site B, the building at Site E. And it would require an amendment application zone change for Site B from C eighty-four, um, urban ne- two to urban center subzone. Next slide. Uh, the public hearing is tentatively scheduled for October twelfth, uh, for the October twelfth Planning Commission meeting for consideration of the addenda, site plan review and of the, and subsequently the item will be scheduled for Council meeting, uh, tentatively scheduled for November seventeen for considerations of the addenda and the application. Next slide. That, uh, concludes staff's presentation. Uh, I'm available for questions at this time. I also like to note that we have the applicant and representatives from North Gate on for tonight's meeting if there's any questions that would like to be directed toward them. Thank you.
Thank you, Pa- thank you. Pedro, can you, uh, just, um, briefly confirm the date that the Planning Commission will see this and the Council will see this?
Of course, uh, Planning Commission is scheduled for October twelfth and November seventeen with the City Council Public Hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, does the Commission, do any of the Commissioners have any questions with regards to this? I'll start with Commissioner Garcia.
None at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Morrissey. Commissioner Morrissey.
Commissioner Morrissey is on the line, I'm sorry, we're just looking through the list to see if he's still on the line. It looks like he is not on the line, Chair, um, I will reach out to him on the side here to see if he had some technical difficulties.
Okay, Commissioner Rivera. No comments, no questions? No, none. Thank you. Commissioner Fan.
Hi, yes, uh, first, before I make my comment, I do want to disclose that the applicant has reached out to me and, uh, discussed this project with me, so, uh, before I go any further, I wanted to state that. Um, the second question I have is, obviously there's gonna be a lot of, uh, housing that is developed. Is this project subject to the housing opportunity ordinance and if so, uh, how do they intend to comply with it?
Thank you, Commissioner. As, uh, the Commission may be, the housing opportunity ordinance has recently revised, um, and it went to, uh, the City Council for consideration. Uh, at the time that the project will be heard, uh, for their October twelfth meeting, the ordinance, the new ordinance would be in effect. So, the project doesn't, uh, trick the housing opportunity ordinance, uh, for the revised, uh, who.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Fan?
Um, that's it for now, bye.
Okay, um, Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Yes, um, the, is, is that a mechanic shop on Site B at this time? That's not part of the project? Okay, so, from my understanding is they're, they're sitting tight, but what happened once the zoning is changed, how did the fact, how did it affect the business?
The zone change should not affect the business if it tend to remain there as an existing auto shop. Um, even with the, uh, zoning that it is now with the UN two, I, I'm not familiar, I don't have the code in front of me, but that use by the ordinance, meaning that it was there before the transit zoning, uh, code was put in place and it's allowed to remain as long, um, has a certificate of occupancy and business license. Um, the moment it stops operating for a period of time and it no longer applies to transit zoning code then a, a new use would have to comply with transit zoning code. The change in the subzone wouldn't change that. Um, it's not gonna affect the business, uh, at all now. The only way it would affect the business is if, you know, the site was developed, it would now be able to, uh, design a building that is allowed within the urban center, um, subzone.
Okay, and do you know if, just out of curiosity, is, uh, the business owner there looking to permanently stay or are they actually looking to, to move?
Um, you know what, I, I may have to, um, defer that question to the app. I know there's been, uh, numerous conversations regarding this site, but as far as I know, the, um, applicant or the business owner is gonna stay. Um, I wanna note, so if, you know, for whatever reason, um, there's private agreement, the business owner is leasing that site would eventually be, uh, incorporated as part of the old project, um, ideally.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, Pa- um, Pedro, just to clarify, um, what you just said, um, couple of things, I'm gonna go back to Commissioner Fan. There is no, there is no application of the who, uh, or, you know, the who ordinance, uh, for in Luffy's with this particular project, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And going back to Cynthia's question, I just wanna get clarification. The current, that, that garage, that mechanic shop is adjacent to the property but it is not part of the property at this point in time. And will remain in, in, as, as long as it stays open, it'll remain in the same zoning that it currently has.
Let me see, like, so the, the site is made up of ten individual parcels. I know those parcels are owned by one owner, um, the last parcel, Ming's Auto is owned by a different person, so that's gonna remain. The zoning is gonna change zone, the subzone from urban neighborhood two on all ten parcels including the site that's not included as part of it. And that's to be consistent, you don't wanna leave this one out live parcel with a different designation.
Okay. All right. Does, does anybody have any questions with regards to the applicant and would the, let me just say, at this point in time, would the applicant like to speak on this project?
Applicant, if you'd like, um, please dial star six to unmute yourself and, um, address the Commission.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, good evening, um, Honorable Chair McLaughlin and Honorable Members of the Planning Commission. My name is Juan Garcia, I'm the Community Engagement Liaison for North Gate and Bellis Market. Tonight, I do have with me Andrew Nelson who's the Principal at Red Oak Investments as well as Carl Middleton who's President of North Gate Real Estate. Uh, we just wanna, actually right now, to thank staff, uh, for their guidance and cooperation in helping us to get to this point, uh, in time with our project. We do believe that this is a good quality transit oriented development that's going to help bring vibrancy to the downtown area and that, uh, for the most part, the development does meet, uh, the majority of the planning guidelines and the intent of the transit zoning code. Uh, we are more than happy to go ahead and try to address some of the questions that the Planning Commission may have. I, I do wanna go ahead and, um, indicate to you that we have been working with the, uh, owners of the Ming's parcel, uh, trying to see if there's an interest or desire on their part to sell the property and we're gonna continue to do, uh, do so throughout the entire process.
Okay. Does anyone have a question or would anybody like to have a question with, uh, or comment with the developer at this point in time? Commissioner Garcia?
Uh, no questions, uh, just a comment that, uh, the applicant also reached out to me, uh, a few weeks ago and, uh, to discuss the project and I did speak to them, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, disclosure. Commissioner Morrissey?
He's off the line, Chair. And will not be returning.
He's still off the line, thanks. Okay, um, Commissioner Rivera?
No, no questions or comments.
Okay, Vice Chair Contreras, uh, Commissioner Fan.
Hi, this question is for the applicant, um, so I understand that under the amended rules because this is part of a place of downtown Santa Ana, uh, special districts, it is exempt, uh, please correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, but will there be any affordable housing that is going to be developed or, you know, will be a result of this development?
So, sure, I'm happy to go ahead and address that. So, this, this particular project right here is actually gonna be, uh, uh, market rate housing. Uh, however, we are right now in discussions in trying to come up with a, uh, development with, uh, CNC development, uh, that would be for affordable housing. Uh, we, we do have a couple of parcels that we're looking at, but right now we're not, uh, at a point in time where we can go ahead and disclose, disclose where we are in those discussions.
Okay, and my other question is regarding the, um, market itself. Um, I grew up next to, uh, North Gate, they're fantastic and, you know, they're really central in the neighborhood. So, uh, where are those employees going to go, what, during construction?
Oh, thank you for the question. I, you know what, I just wanted to go ahead and emphasize to you, uh, with regards to the, the previous question, that we are truly committed to making certain that we come up with affordable housing at another location. We will, we will go ahead and, uh, commit to something like that. Now, with regards to the current associates that we have at that store right there, we're going to go ahead and, and place them at other stores right there in the general vicinity. And, um, pleased to say that, once we end up actually developing the new, um, store, that that one right there is going to probably have twice the number of associates. So, uh, nobody is going to be displaced and we will, uh, actually continue to provide, uh, a shopping, um, uh, market for folks who are accustomed to shopping right there at that location at Fort and Mortimer.
Um, that's fantastic. First, I really wanna commend you for your commitment to support Santa Ana residents and providing affordable housing. I think that that is just really something fantastic and that shows you're really invested in the community. Um, secondly, uh, regarding hiring, or, you know, you're expanding your workforce, I, I can't require it, but I would love to see that you, uh, focus on hiring, uh, local residents, uh, veterans and, um, folks from the community because obviously it'd be great if they worked near where they live. Um, and that's all my questions for now, thanks.
Well, thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna, um, indicate that, uh, you know, while the project has not been let, uh, we are gonna go ahead and, uh, you know, look to, um, the possibilities of being able to, uh, hire, uh, lo- local, uh, folks where we can.
Okay, great, we appreciate that. Um, Vice Chair Contreras Leo, any questions of the applicant?
Uh, no, and I'm not sure if I shared earlier, but I also reviewed the project with the applicant, so most of my questions have been answered, I think it's a, another great project adding to our downtown, thank you.
Okay, and I too, uh, did have some contact with the applicant and we discussed a number of items, so I wanna make sure that that's also disclosed. At this point in time, if there's no final questions from, uh, for staff or for the applicant, we will close the, uh, we will close this staff with a, we will close the staff and, um, uh, go on to final class staff comments.
Oh, Chair, if I may, um, I'd like to report that we did receive, uh, written communication on this item, there were two
Oh, I'm sorry.
And they were both in, in favor, and then I will go ahead, we do have some callers in the queue, so I will go ahead, um, and ask if anyone would like to comment on this work-study item, please dial star nine now.
Thank you.
I'll wait a couple of moments. Okay, there is no, there's no one who would like to speak.
Okay, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Chair.
We have, we have...
We had one, uh, one person who raised their hand, um, caller there, it seems as, as if it's a private number, so I don't have the last three numbers, but whoever raised their, uh, whoever dialed star nine, please press star six to unmute yourself and state your name and your comment. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Sorry about the, sorry about the private call, um, my name is Lassandro, I am a resident in French Park. I, uh, sorry I didn't get earlier during just the general public comment period, so I was just gonna, I know you guys aren't, um, required to open up work-study sessions, I appreciate allowing me to comment on this. So, I just wanted to mention that I really appreciate the fact that the developer went ahead and changed the design of the project. I was buzzing at the first, I think it was the Sunshine Community Meeting, um, maybe it was almost like a year ago or two years ago. And the design was really suburban in nature, I think they even had garages funding one of the, one of the streets along the, uh, Site B. So, this, this project is much better, especially the, the Fourth Street facade on Building A. Uh, the, the, the street level is fantastic, so that's really awesome to see. Um, one of the comments I would just add, uh, is parking is really high, it's two point three or two point four, that's that's kinda crazy for downtown which we're trying to create a, really a transit oriented development, but of course, um, that's not on the developer, that's just our standard, I think our standard is two in the transit zoning code, which I still think should be reduced in the future because it is extremely high when you're gonna have a lot of, um, amenities in downtown which isn't required for folks to use a car and you're gonna have the OC streetcar as well. Um, so, the last thing that I just wanted to mention is, I guess it's a comment and question regarding the windows, I think the windows are gonna be really important for this development to just make it look really nice. Uh, so I would recommend that developers, if they can, do not just use hung slider windows and just use, you know, like, this turn, copper windows or casement windows. and just use, you know, like, just turn copper windows or casement window, um, or hinged windows, because the sliders tend to look really bad when, um, when it's on multi-family projects that are multi-story. So, th- those are the, the summary of my comments. I really like the fact that the project is being proposed, because the current Northgate market goes its back to the street on Fourth Street and you don't really get an interaction with any building, it's just a blank wall. This would be an improvement. Um, that's, that's everything I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody else who would like to speak on this item?
No other speakers, Chair.
Okay, um, hearing none, then we'll, we'll bring it back, uh, one more time to, uh, the commission and, um, see if we have any final comments. And thank you for, thank you for noting the written communication on this item too.
Yes.
Um, so at this point in time, does anyone, is any of the commissioners want to comment or question staff at this, at this juncture on this work-study? Commissioner Garcia?
No questions remain, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Rivera?
No, no questions, thank you.
And, um, Commissioner Fan?
There are just a couple of comments while we're here. Um, I, I really love the mural in the, the graphics descriptions. I do hope that you consider, or the applicant considers, carrying that across to Building Z, which is, um, much more beige overall. And I think it would really help tie in the development with each other and bring in some color on that end of the street. Um, and also doing something with the parking structure. I understand that it is the backside of the development, however, you know, neighbors have to look at it every day. And there's no reason why it had to be really boring and gray. And so, maybe some color or something to spruce it up would be really great. And those are all my comments for today, thank you.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay, um, I guess my one comment is that I do appreciate what, uh, was brought through in the public, uh, hearing. And that is, is that, uh, it appears that for all intent purposes, from the Sunshine Ordinance Meeting to now, uh, the applicant has done a lot of, um, updating and changing of the original design predicated on the input from the community. I think that's a great, uh, great testimony to the Sunshine Process and, and seeing how we bring the neighborhoods in. And it's good to know that the neighborhoods are in support of this particular project that surround this particular project. And look forward to, um, moving on and, and reviewing this in its final stages on, uh, I guess it's ten, twelve, we're going to have the, the project in front of the Planning Commission. So, we look forward to seeing it at that point in time again. And, uh, thank you for your, uh, continued support of the downtown area in Santa Ana. Okay. Is there, is there anything else? We're going to move on to open, to staff comments? Staff, are there any comments that we have at this point in time?
I have no comments at this time, thank you.
Mr. Chairman Vince Fugoso, just want to say thank you for tonight, your patience with us. And also thank you to Pedro for helping us out in this presentation. You may not know, but he got married yesterday, but still came forward today to attend your Planning Commission. So, uh, thank you to Pedro and congrats.
So, so, so we, we, Pedro, we were your, your honeymoon?
I know, Pedro, you're not starting on the right foot.
I am not.
You know, I'm messing with you, congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, Pedro.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and, and, and thanks, thanks for having your honeymoon with us, I mean, geez.
Go house, go thank my wife for sharing me for the night, so.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll thank her in a big way, all right?
He's, he's committed to the job, Mr. Chairman.
There you go, there you go. Uh, he'll remember that twenty-five years from now, and boy, that'll be a tough one.
She will, she will.
That's it, thank you. You're right. All right, Commissioner Garcia, have you got any comments for this evening?
No, thank you, and, uh, congratulations, Pedro.
Thank you. Commissioner Rivera?
Just wanted to say thank you, I congratulate you.
Okay, Commissioner Fan?
Hi, yes, two comments. First of all, well, first, thank you staff and all the applicants in preparing all of this. Secondly, I just want to do a last comment about completing the census. It ends on Wednesday, September thirtieth, we still have time, it takes twenty seconds to do. So, please complete that. And finally, um, the Betum Pool, which is the Vietnamese Mid-Autumn Festival, is on Thursday, and it's a big celebration for the community. Um, it brings in the fall, so I really hope that folks can go out there, buy some mooncakes and celebrate with their families. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fan, Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Uh, no, I, well, I do want to thank staff for, um, you know, reaching out to us to meet with, in regards to the project prior. I think it went a lot smoother, uh, being informed and coming in and last-minute questions just went so much better. Thank you, Mark, for, for guiding us through this, but just want to say I appreciated that. And Pedro, many blessings on your new journey.
Thank you very much.
That's all, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Contreras Leo. Um, uh, again, I think, uh, just, yes.
I'm so sorry, the, the deadline for the census was extended to October fifth, so there's no excuse not to do it. Please fill out the census.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Fan. Okay, um, I'd just like to say thanks for staff for doing what they did with regards to sitting down individually and going through the questions that we might have with regards to the Third and Broadway Project. Um, this is something probably on some of these major projects, we probably should consider in the future, uh, so that, uh, each, each individual commissioner has the ability to go through in detail with process, rather than have it done at the, at the commission level. I think it makes sense to have some insight and some further instruction and details early on. Um, I think that, uh, it was great to see that we have two very exciting programs that are planned for downtown. And I think that, um, you know, we are going to need these projects in order to, in fact, continue to come back in our business, it, with our businesses after this COVID situation. So, I think that this is all good. And the sooner we can get these projects going, the better off we'll be, both from the labor and building it and those that will end up living in the units and everything else. So, um, thank you for taking the time to go through this. And I have no further, um, comments at this point. But, um, I would like to note that the next regularly scheduled Planning, uh, Commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, October twelfth at five thirty. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening and, uh, be safe.
Thank you, Chairman. Good night, everybody.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, good night.